I want to thank you all for being with us tonight for our regular council meeting of January 28th, 2016. Mr. Manning, if you don't mind, would you lead us in our roll call, excuse me, in our communication place?
I know the fathers of God, thank you for each one to come out this way and support each one of us. For all of us that not this form always do what you have us to do, Father. Thank you for all the reports, thank you for everybody joining up all the more to all, thank you for your love and understanding, Jesus name we pray. Amen. Our place of life is.
Our place of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. A free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Diane, if we can have.
Mayor Lankford.
Here.
Councilman Bravick.
Here.
Councilman Cagle.
Here.
Councilman Manning.
Here.
Councilman Sewell.
Here.
Interim City Manager Williams.
Here.
City Attorney Moore.
Here.
Gentlemen, I trust everyone has had opportunity to review the items of the consent agenda, the minutes from the January 14th Agenda Work Session, as well as the minutes from the regular council meeting of January 14th, also the December 2015 financial report. We will entertain motion. Quick motion for.
Say.
A motion to approve and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Bravick.
Yes.
Councilman Cagle.
By myself not being here for the council meeting, I approve the I am today in the city on this.
Okay, we can. Yeah, that would probably be the easiest one, it would just be to abstain.
I'll abstain on that.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be on the entire consent agenda to abstain.
I abstain.
Councilman Manning.
Yes.
Councilman Sewell.
Yes.
Mayor Lankford.
Yes. It is good to have you back with us.
Well, it's not a year been here.
Right.
I mean, what, I appreciate that people now work here.
Well, for those who weren't, for those who weren't here at our last meeting, Councilmember Cagle hung in there as long as he could, he was under the weather and had stopped up ears and couldn't hear very well, and he was here for the agenda session and, well, for the agenda session.
I'm here for both of them.
Right, and then you left and get right, okay. So, it is good to have you back with us. All right, at this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. I don't know if anyone has signed in, it looks like someone has. So, we will. We'll get the list first and then come back and catch everyone who maybe didn't have an opportunity. All right, Penstone is the first one on the list, or the only one on the list, actually. 1557 Cora Drive, please come to the front and state your, well, you don't have to state it, I've already done it.
Um, Penstone, as you said, 1557 Cora Drive. I came before you all at the end of last summer to bring this situation to you and ask for someone to inspect it. It's at the corner of Greenslake Road and Bennett. There is someone living in this RV that's parked at the building. In these photos, you'll see, if you look closely, the arrows point out the power cord that go from the RV into the business. It's been this way for more than a year. The new pull behind camper that you see in the other photo showed up about seven weeks ago. And about three weeks ago, the mattress that's sitting on top of the pull behind camper showed up, and it's been there ever since through rain and snow and whatever. As I said then, I'm sure this is not zone for someone to be living in an RV at this business. I ask again, can someone see what this situation really is? It can't be safe, certainly isn't a zone for that, and it's quite a nice orb for me to see every time I go to and from my home.
There are a couple of things. One, I'll let the interim city manager speak to the possibility of having already gone out to look at this, or the possibility of sending something out. We also have something on the agenda tonight that will, at least in part, deal with this kind of issue.
That's great, we do have something on the agenda tonight to deal with this type of situation. Since you did bring that to the city council's attention, as well as to our department and the code portion. This situation has been investigated. We have documented information of such. With that, we're putting together an ordinance that we're going to be bringing up tonight to address this type of situation.
It is actually item A under New Business Tonight Ordinance 1005. Just to give you the caption, it would prohibit the parking of personal recreational vehicles in commercial parking lots for more than three consecutive days.
Thank you, wonderful.
And I would point out, not just living in the RV, obviously, it's the parking there, so whether someone's living there or not, it may be.
Right, so it would prohibit them from having pull behind campers sitting there, as well as the one who's living there. Thank you. The other situation.
Whether they're living there or not, they cannot park, so it's only.
Thank you. The other situation I asked about when I was here last summer was the traffic lights. And I was told at the time that they were on a loop. I would like to ask that whoever is in charge of city traffic lights do an inspection on these loops, I think they're corrupted. The one at Bennett often lets one car go through and immediately changes. I don't think it was ever anybody's intention for one car to go through a traffic light and then for it to change it, when there's other cars waiting to go. And believe me, I sat there and watched. One car at a time, it's not always, so I think the loop is corrupted on that.
You know, it could be that it does some destruction.
Is it Bennett, Greenslake, or Bennett?
Yes. The traffic lights, and forgive me, I may have called the numbers wrong on Ringgold Road. I believe the one at Greenslake or Kingwood is 11, and then there's 12 and 13 by the bylaw now. I don't think again that the loop is correct, I think it's corrupted. Very often, you'll be the very first car at light number 12 on this side of the bylaw. And it turns, and you go 100 yards to the next traffic light, and it's red already. And then the next one, number 14, is suddenly red before you get to it. I don't think that's the way y'all intended it, I know that's the way traffic lights are not supposed to work. So, again, if I can ask that whoever's in charge, just re-inspect those loops, I think they're corrupted.
If I recall correctly, the city Chattanooga is controlling, do they not have? They're not yet, okay.
What happened is, when you brought this to our attention, I addressed this with our traffic shop. Our traffic shop went out and investigated. The light at Greenslake and Bennett, John Ross and Bennett, and Greenslake and John Ross, are the three lights that are the oldest computer system that we have in place. During a meeting with staff last week, we discussed this with traffic. We did find and allocate money that is in their account for such. So, they will be in the next period of, next couple of weeks, they will be changing some of these out. They're ordering new boards, they're ordering new computers for those. So, hopefully, with these new updates, that should correct some of those issues. I don't know exactly how that intersection is actually set up, that's a question for Mike Abel, he's a traffic engineer at the time, but we have addressed that, and we're looking at updating those three intersections with new computers.
And will you also check the ones there on Ringgold Road, 11, 12, 13, and 14?
I will, I will note it, I will pass it on, too.
And the only other thing that I brought up at that time and have to bring up again is the striping where Kingwood turns on to Greenslake. Again, I've had several more near misses because people just don't turn in their proper lane, they come head on into people like me who are in their proper lane. It's just a dangerous situation, and I cannot think, it can't cost that much. I know it's not like painting a house, painting a road is much more difficult, but I'm not asking for the whole road to be striped, just that dangerous road. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mann was the only one on our list, do we have anyone else who maybe didn't get a chance to sign in who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. You'll state your name and address for later, please.
I will. Matthew Clapper, 706, I'm late. I just, I don't know if any of the one of you read the article that Dick Cook posted yesterday on East Ridge News Online regarding the police department and their ability to research things that were turned into pawn shops using Leads Online. I've looked into it, and I've talked to the people at Leads Online, and basically, we have at least two of the five pawn shops in East Ridge that do not submit pawn tickets directly to the police department. They've been using an online system for as long, for a long time. And our police department doesn't have access to the online system because it costs $3,000 a year, or something like that. And what it does is, according to Leads Online, I talked to their sales representative, if the city subscribes to it, then we can go online and search a national database of all the pawn brokers who enter their pawn tickets into this database. We can set up alerts, so like, if your TV stolen, they can go in there and say, this TV, this model number, this serial number, and if somebody turns it in anywhere in the country, it'll email you and say, you can reclaim stolen property at this spot. And I guess our detectives have been using it through other agencies, not directly, to recover potentially thousands of dollars in stolen property for East Ridge residents. But I think it's important that we have this, that our detectives and our police department has the tools to search for people's stolen property within the city. And not only that, but it's also important to pass an ordinance that requires the pawn brokers, or anyone who takes, buys jewelry and stuff like that in the city, to use Leads Online as the reporting tool, or to use the reporting tool of our choice, which would be Leads Online, to document this. So, that way, if somebody in Chattanooga steals something, and they come to research and pawn it, then they can get caught, you know? Because if there's somebody committing a burglary in Chattanooga, they might be committing a burglary in East Ridge. And currently, there's at least one pawn shop in East Ridge that doesn't use Leads Online, and faxes all their stuff to us directly. So, that would mean that if I'm a crook in Chattanooga, there's at least one pawn shop that I can continually pawn at in East Ridge, unless a police officer from the city of Chattanooga directly goes there, this stuff will never be recovered because it's not put into any national database, it just backs to us directly. And I think that for the low amount of the cost, I mean, like, quarter of what we're spending on a birthday party, to recover the stolen property of the people in this city, and to help people in other cities recover their property from our establishments is good, and it won't cost the businesses anything. They get free access to the software, in fact, the sales rep told me that they can integrate it with the point-of-sale system, so it will help the pawn broker, whoever, when they process the sale, it'll already partially fill out the paperwork for them to make it more efficient, you know? And to me, it's a no-brainer, I mean, we either get, we either go to all the pawn shops that are currently doing it online and say, send us your paperwork, and we get buried in paperwork that somebody's gotta go through and either put in a database or flip through every day. Or we spend a few thousand dollars, and all of a sudden, our people have access to the tools they need to recover the property of our residents. I mean, I don't see how that's something that has to wait on a budget cycle or four to do, that's what we're, that's what you guys are here for.
In, in, in all fairness, this is.
I know it's new to you.
Exactly, you're not part of any of that, so again.
No, 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 I know that, I'm not blaming anyone up here. Our police department's been aware of it, they've been using it, I mean, it's just kinda been using it for 10 years. So, I'm not saying, I'm not saying anyone's at fault, but, you know, fix the problem, that's all. That's all I'm asking, you know, maybe give some direction and make it happen.
Do other municipalities subscribe to this service?
Yeah, Chattanooga does, I talked to the city of Chattanooga, I talked to their property recovery team. They subscribe to it, County subscribes to it, Dick Cook, according to his article, talked to Red Bank, and they're about to subscribe to it. Even though they have no pawn shops, they're gonna subscribe to it just because it'll help them recover stolen property from their citizens. So, if no one else subscribed to it in the area, it'd be a waste of time. But the fact is that all these other people are doing it, and a lot of the other pawn shops are doing it. To me, if it catches two criminals and recovers someone's stolen Xbox, it's worth it. Even if it's not monetarily gainful, it's worth it to protect the citizens of this city. And I know that not everything that gets stolen gets pawned, oblivious, but it's a small percentage. But it, but it does add up to quite a bit. According to the article that Mr. Cook wrote, detective said that he used it on one, reclaimed $100,000 in stolen property last year. To me, it's worth 3,000, 4,000, whatever it costs to do it, you know? But the important thing would be two-pronged, one directing them to buy it, and the other one passing an ordinance that requires them to submit the tickets in a manner of our choosing, which would be the online system, you know, because if our pawn brokers aren't using it, it doesn't, doesn't work.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else? All right, we'll move on to communication from council members. Mr. Manning, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, I just want to say.
Okay, Mr. Sewell.
Yes, I'd like to ask the city manager about, what's, what's this?
This pack, you know my relation here?
I'm talking about the dude.
Oh, man. We had a meeting with the architect of our experience, and he had submitted some of our plans. We had went through those plans, looked at them, there'd been an engineer that has looked at the pre-existing construction. We've contacted the company that actually wrecked it and dismantled the last station. The last few weeks on the project have been very busy. We got a study back from an engineer to, on a cost amount for the site work, which we felt like was relatively a little high, so we're looking at some other options. The latest information of what we're gonna do in the period at this time is not go with a new building altogether. We're going to look at taking the same fire station now, and basically reverse it, the station where the, what used to be the back would actually be the front of the station now. We turned the station completely around, where the base will be on the right-hand side, zooming on the left-hand side. So, it has been very, very busy, very productive the last three weeks on this, more so than the previous months. And that's all because we've been waiting on the spin of plans and such from the architect, who's looking at it. Once we give him a base drawing, and ideas of what we were wanting to change inside of the structure, we put that together, you know, formulated plans, submitted that to us. Of course, we went through it, and we had to do some changing and stuff, so it is in progress. Hopefully, we'll have more by, probably around the first week of February, second week of February. I would be very hesitant to throw that out there right now.
What else, I'd like to bring up? I would, I'd like to bring up this birthday party again, and kind of reconsider spending that much money. I think we should wait for the 100th anniversary, do a big blowout. We just, I've been thinking earlier, we're gonna have some more calls coming to us, like I said, this loop to be used.
Mr. Cagle, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. I don't know if anybody read it last night on the computer or not, but, per the funeral held over at Young Memorial, Young Garden. Very, very appreciative of his work, so I'd like to thank all this part of the fire department. Also, I've got an old issue that I'd like to bring up, that's pretty lengthy. I wonder if now would be the time or at the end of the, it's concerning, Senior Ridgeway. Called, back, two meetings ago, I had to put big rather, about, the cost is bigger than the cost. I haven't seen any figures of that, so since then, I have done some checking with the stuff, I've covered some figures for myself. Folks, but we need to get this done, because.
As far as I'm concerned, you go ahead and share that, that would be fine.
All right, it's very lengthy, but I've got it written down, so I'll go ahead and read it.
That's fine.
All right. On December 10th, 2015, I asked Chief Williams, do we get a cost, and I had to figure whether we go up on Senior Ridgeway or not. Okay, it hadn't been brought back to them. Then at that time, Mike said the last time that we went up over, was the last time we had property tax increase, which was back in, not, 2011, where we had 1.227. And then the property tax went up to 1.427, went up 36,100. I've looked in this book right here, found out that back in 2011, our assessments were $345 million. And our letting value was $4,908,000, okay? Now, here in 2010, I mean, 2015, our assessment value is $330,771. Our assessments had went down by 15 million dollars. The money that we get off of that is right here, is $4,705,000, which that has come down $200,000. That is a decrease in money that we're collecting. The fund, Police Department and our fire department, contract price, which was back in 2009, come to a total of $95,841 for us to provide them, the fire police department, okay? Essentially, it had went up, I take time to contract, where it went up is $95,000 to $98,000, which is in our budget. Went up $3,000 back in 2011. Okay? Police's budget back in 2015 was $3,426,991. Then in '26, it was $3,605,926. So, there's a difference. The fire department went from $1,552,000 to $1,691,000. So, there, one year from 15 to 16, how much the cost of operating our fire department and our police department had went up. So, we have it went up on City Ridgeway, so, now, the difference in this, in this one year is $318,540. The taxpayers are having fun for the police and fire to go over to City Ridgeway. And also, last week, while I wasn't here, the city was named the chief Williams. They are short firemen and short of police, which I don't have, I don't disagree with you. But folks, if we are short staff over here in East Ridge, why are we going over here and funding, purchasing, firing, police protection for a city that don't pay us enough taxes? This $98,000 is not covering the cost for us going over there and back. And the reason why I say that is because last week, there was a salary put in here for, put a position in, okay? $1,311,000 comes up to $54,000 a year, okay? I will have you trips, we went to Ridgeway, per that, we go once the shift.
Depending on the shift, sir. Say like over one, two, or three times a general patrol.
Per shift?
Usually do.
Okay, that's, that's, so that's a one, two, or three times, that's either three, six, or nine times a day in 24-hour period. So, where we're tied up, the car three times on the first, the car three times on the second, the car three times on the third. So, we're looking at three men there times for 52 weeks out of the year. So, and we're looking at $54,000 per man. So, it don't take long to do math to say that we're losing money that go on over there.
But that would be based on, if you run that math and say, you know, it's $54,000 per man, obviously, they don't spend the entire shift over there, so.
Well, if you go over there three times, figure, I won't say that if you spend it over there three times a day, but we're gonna spend five or six hours going over there and back and patrolling the city of Ridgeway for that one shift, if they go three times a day.
Take about an hour to about 15 minutes to patrol the city.
How long's it take to get over there and back?
Five minutes to six.
And I, yeah, I think that your point's well taken, that we need to, you know, we need to revisit, obviously, the cost of.
And I've got the fire department, you know, where they get a sit call over there, they send the fire agent with three men on it, correct this week?
I wish I could send three men over now.
Oh, I understand, I'm just asking, please.
Yeah, I can have your husband two men on it.
So, we're sending a $600,000 pension to go over with three men on it for a sit call.
And I think, and I think ultimately, what I think would be very helpful at this council, I mean, if Chief Reed or Chief Williams feels like what they're having to do for Ridgeway is not worth the contract, if it's not, I mean, if we're losing, I think, I think they need to tell us how they would like for us to proceed. Because, yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're losing our shirt, then we obviously need to make a change, but.
But I have to be sure it's staff, we're gonna have tire staff to keep, send the staff to press the freeway over here for City of Ridgeway.
Again, I think it's really better if. Again, I think it's, it's really better of our chiefs deciding...
Well, they get to decide because we have six months, five months.
And I mean, you know, ultimately, we're not gonna, this council's not gonna be able to crunch the numbers and know the exact times like the chiefs would.
No, I'm, I'm...
And like I said, your point's, your point's very well taken, your point's well taken, that we need to, we need to revisit, we need to, we need to do it very, very soon. But I, I would...
My actual figures, two captures, two captures, you know, have got them.
We will...
These I got out of the audit and out of the book this year, but I had them on my back in 2009. It says it's a figure per cap on the number of vehicles, number of residents.
Typically, I don't, I don't think the, the number, I think the number's gonna be about the same as it was, probably with that, when we signed that original contract. And I don't remember exactly why or how the council came up with the figure. What I think the council based it on was, you took, you took the city of East Ridge, you took the population, you took the amount the budget was at the time, and it was a formula figure, and that's about how much each citizen in the city of East Ridge was paying for fire protection, just picking up on fire on this subject. But at the same time, they took the amount of citizens that live in the city of Ridgeway, took that into consideration, comparing it to our budget, how much more it was actually costing them, or fire service, it was actually costing City Ridgeway more than it was costing our citizens because of the less population for fire protection. But I would be more happy to look at that, I'll put the formula together, I'll sit down with you, I'll explain it to you, to the best of my knowledge.
And then on fire protection, we need to look at the average value of a home in City Ridgeway versus what we're doing over here on what we're giving them for fire protection for their homes over there.
I agree, because they do get our same rate, they get the ISO too that we are. And they do not have any, any commercial structures. So our latter company really doesn't play into the city of Ridgeway as it would with our city. But I would be more than happy to put something together and have that for you.
Uh, can I tell you, I was gonna ask Chief Reed and Chief Williams, do y'all keep logged when they go over there? I know, I know they have calls. Look as far as going.
We don't do that, we log when they go over there, they go on, they sort of patrol like we do in district. If they're, if they're in their district, they might just run over, run into the neighborhoods, look over there, and come back, sign something, they log, but if we get a call over there or dispatch, logs happening at all, we do it for you.
I just wondered, it may be good, we all make them keep a log, you know, how many trips I do make over there, just kind of look at it and see. You know, if we're looking at calls, we need to have something to back up, or do talk to them, you know, how many times they're coming over there. And I know I've lived on the ship that's went over there, I'm safe. And like I say, it takes like eight minutes to get over there, you know, run through it, so I'll have that for you.
Here in the time factor since you brought that up. City manager's show of June 1 provides City Ridgeway with notice, caused of July 1 next year and following. The city of East Ridge reserved the right to impose a surcharge for any renewal based on excessive cost for the prior year, excessive cost means increase of cost of 20% or more based on cost of 20%. This is 2007, 2008. So if we're not keeping a log, how are we determining the 20% excessive cost or not?
We, we keep a log on fireside. As far as every call that we run in that city, as well as this city, we're gonna keep a log.
You would, because you're for dispatch, or police there.
Normal patrol does, could be something that typically, when a car goes to City Ridgeway, from what I understand, whatever pass, they'll check the Ridgeway. Is there a route to City Ridgeway? When they get back in the city, they'll invite them back in the city. So same such, there may be a reported, some type of counter log, dispatch, we'll have to check on that, see. And there's times too, that during the shift, that the shift is busy, and they're not able to go over there. You know, that's, that possibly will run into obstacles. So I mean, it's, we'll look at it, and so we'll put, put together the best information of the fire employees, and so we'll provide it. I, I think that...
But we also provide the detective service, when they get a house broken into over there, or whatever, best getting from houses to burglaries, so any open cases that we have, that our detectives are working for City Ridgeway. I could tell you right off the top, no, we have some, we might have worked that out. So we've got a main of our working on detective department, trying to recover their property, so... So I say my statement.
No, thank you. Appreciate the, the research and study that went into that. Do you have anything else? Good, okay. Mr. Grabbert?
City manager's decision. I mean, how many applications, resumes, or other information do you receive?
I've been applying for 40, there's about 29, I can think of another 11.
Uh, where, where was all, was that advertised in?
Januotimes, Free Press, M Task, C Managers, ICNA.
I see TML, didn't it?
Yes, TMA.
I was just...
It's all the websites.
Are we still holding the resumes, or, I don't know, where I'm, sort of, you know, any kind of argument or anything? I'm just trying to figure out where we are in the process, I think tomorrow's the last day. And, and then is someone going to vet through them, and...
I think, yeah, I think the city attorney was gonna look at them and just make sure they meet the minimum.
Yeah, determine what they qualify for.
Sure.
Yeah, I know about four.
Okay, that's, that's all, I, I just wanna know who, who was gonna go through them first. Okay, all right. To our dollars, all that we've received?
Yes, turn to that now, because there may be more.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Yes, okay.
Have the council been, have there been one of those, when there are a kind of top 10 or top 5 being presented to the council for us to look at?
I would, I would rather, just, just for me, and obviously, I don't, I certainly speak for you all, but I would like to see all of them. I would, I would like, yeah, all of them that are qualified anyway.
Plus...
Yeah. Well, out of that 40, 30 of them might be qualified, so...
So is the official captain gonna copy that after a moment?
I don't think so. I mean, yeah, obviously, there's gonna be a little bit of time while the city attorney goes through it and all of that.
I believe that's all that I have.
I've just got a couple of things, one, I wanted, saw the news blurb, yesterday I've been in Kingsport all week, crap up with my, my day job, but I saw the little news blurb about Mr. Grabbert receiving a legislator of the year award from the assessors association.
The Tennessee Assessors Association, yeah.
So congratulations on that, that's a nice honor. And also, I wanted to just mention real quick, it was given some information here earlier about permit fees that have been collected in the city of East Ridge. To kind of give you an indication of how much is going on, and how, how busy our COVID enforcement folks have been, and really all of our city hall staff. In 2013, we collected $53,700 in permit fees. And that's for, you know, building fees, demolition, plumbing, sign, mechanical, all of that stuff. 2014, it was $60,000. 2015, $223,000, almost $224,000. So almost twice what the two-year total had been in 2013 and 14 is what we saw in 2015. That's how, how much is, is going on with, that's when Walmart builds a grocery store, and Bass Pro's doing all that they're doing. So it's, it's amazing how, how busy our folks have been, so I just wanted to commend all of our staff. On, on a great job.
One thing, I'll get that paper if I can. Oh, I have checked in our code department, it's short. There's a little more flow in there.
Maybe there's...
Also, Brad wants over. Nobody started back, sorry, wouldn't wait for it, so I thought when he looked into, he would give him the raise, pardon somebody, hell.
Second thing.
That fourth one, you think second?
It's not in order right now. But thank you, pretty, pretty confidence. Again, I think, I think our staff is doing a fine job. And it's a busy time, but what exciting time. And that's all that I have. City manager slash fire chief, Williams?
I have two small things. One, last week, I want to appreciate our friends, public works, our public works folks, sanitation and streets. You know, we had that little snow event, committed a little dusting, and roads were soaking wet. A lot of people realized that those roads froze that night. These guys were out all night long, sanding these roads. We received no complaints about not seeing city workers out there, I don't see, perceived any complaints about, hey, my road's not being sanded, you know, nobody moving, this type of stuff, running, guy did a wonderful job, I can't, can't say enough for him. Fire police were out there, all, all of our departments really working hard and looking. But, you know, still, I'm thanking, I want to say for having me, I really appreciate everything they do. The other thing I'd like to address was, Mr. Big Lockery, you know, you mentioned about this wet place information. I've been in contact with Chief Reed today. And we're going forward, and we are going ahead and start purchasing that. I was gonna stop you, but since you were so fired up and so interested in speaking, I just, I couldn't stop you, and I felt like I'd be, be held back, so...
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and address that and make sure you're, you're aware of that. So, yeah, we are going forward with that, so we'll be on board here hopefully, this season again. That's all I have.
One more thing that I need to say, Governor Coley.
Yes.
Oh, I appreciate, maybe it's dumped out, the paper got laid out around the area.
Right.
And I've had no complaint about nobody. I know that my neighbor advised, I think it was, they had even, I think four different times. And around the other part, part number eight, back in March, it did mean more than that, so I appreciate that.
It's been a crazy month or so, weather-wise, 70 degrees on Christmas, floods, and quick, yeah, quick, quick turnaround, and we get ice, and a little bit of snow, and gonna be, this weekend, I've been back in the 60s. You'll fit? Excuse me? Yes, sir.
Uh, if I may, sir, absolutely. Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir.
One more thing, my barber, who, myself, Jim Bethune, and I don't know who else go to,
remind me not to go there.
He had requested about the lights on the back side, he said all of them are burned out now. So if you could take care of...
Yes, but thank you, and I will, I'll get with Bill in the morning, remind me not to go to that barber, please.
Thanks. You know, one of the things that, 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 me personally, I'd like to shine in for a second.
Sure.
You know, it takes time to replace, time and money to replace, number one, equipment, maintain equipment, equipment that should have been really replaced a long time ago, talking about, you know, maybe in reference to the rotating, we've got on a schedule of the police department now with their vehicles and motorcycles, we're fixing to spend $600,000 on a new fire truck too, and so, we already have, so, you know, we're doing what we're doing, that's what I'm, that's what I was trying to get at.
All right, I've got just one more thing before we can get into whole business, and that is tomorrow, not only is tomorrow our deadline for city manager applications, but it's also Chief Williams' birthday. So I would like to...
There you go, Jackie's gonna like this.
Happy, happy birthday, Chief Williams. It's a little bit, a little bit early, but we hope you have a wonderful day tomorrow.
Don't even pay for 26, right?
I'll help get City Williams' helmet, look up.
Oh, okay.
That's it, that 26 plus.
All right, moving on to whole business, item A, ordinance number 1,001.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the East Ridge zoning ordinance, ordinance number 481, which amends Title 14, Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 108, 110 of East Ridge Municipal Code, as it relates to on-premise and off-premise sign and billboard regulations. Here for second file.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, I placed this, I placed this on the table. And, and I've spoken to Chief Custer today, I've also, the past couple of days, I've spoken to, to Charlie Hunt, spoken to R and R, Al Gore advertising, spoken to Bearway, Al Gore advertising. They, they have all agreed to come in and sit down with us and take a look at this, the billboard design ordinance. Chief Custer, would you like to, I don't wanna speak for you, but you and I had a, an extended conversation about this today, and I think that you're in favor of leaving this on the table so that all parties can have time to come together and, and just look at it, come to a consensus. So that we don't have to come back and redo it in two more months, three more months. We wanna get it right first time, so...
Also, we've put this on the table, I might, like, we ought to put a, some more toy on the LEDs.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll say it then.
Okay, so we have a, a motion in a second to, to table?
To table.
1,001.
Yes.
We're not, I'm not saying we're doing away with LEDs, we're just saying, we're told that we look at what we will need to get done.
Right.
Let me suggest that, I don't see anything fault between the cracks, but that more toy also should include, for example, a regular billboard being converted to an LED, so anything involving a LED, we are having existing more toy, but make sure that there's no misunderstanding, that conversion of a regular billboard to an LED is still subject to...
So, no, we, we've had one put up without permit, I saw one of that, we've got it called in.
You want, you wanna amend your motion?
I mean, go ahead, you, you go ahead.
What we do then, can we, if, we'll need to, we'll need to withdraw the motion in a second.
Yeah, listen, let's split it up and make it two separate motions. Uh, I'm gonna leave ordinance number 10, 01 on the table. Oh, we did? I, I, oh, okay. I make a motion to table it.
Same.
We have a motion in a second to table ordinance 1, 0, 0, 1.
All right, can Mr. Coker say something here?
Absolutely. Um, staff, just speaking with councilman staff, we, we feel like this is the best route to go. There, there, we've encountered several issues with our sign ordinance in the past, as we've redeveloped it, having to work with RBA, different organizations. And especially as it comes to the size of the sign, whether it be a standard sign, off-premise sign, LEDs. Our city is growing, things are changing, and we do wanna get this right. We don't, we don't wanna rush into it, it has taken a little longer than we had anticipated. And with the LEDs, working with different companies is definitely gonna be the way to go. Help us understand the technological aspect of it, so we're making the right decision, and we're, we're putting things in the ordinance that we can actually enforce. Because this, the LED portion is gonna continue to evolve. This is an ordinance that we can adopt tomorrow and not touch it for 15 years. It's gonna constantly evolve with technology, so we do... So we just need to make sure that we're doing the right thing, we're putting the right things in there, and something that's manageable up until.
Thank you. And, and all three of the organizations are, are working with us.
I spoke for key mentor Charlie.
Yeah, exactly.
Yesterday. He, you know, he, just in that brief conversation, he explained some interesting things to me about it, what, what percentage of brightness those signs are supposed to be at night, it's something like three percent. You wouldn't think it would be that low, but that's what it is. But, anyway, just some really interesting information, I think it would be a very good, good thing to have those folks come in and fill us in on, on their thoughts and, I guess, what, what kind of state of information they can provide.
And we have had a few different companies make applications to alter their billboards as of yesterday, the last few days. And just wanna make sure that what we tell them to try, whether they can or whether they can't.
We're getting some type here and that after we vote this.
But they've all, it's already been submitted, so that's what I'm.
Okay.
You know, that's a price of bill to today.
Okay.
All right, if we do that tonight, where, then our, our max can follow them, because I already have these very tall too.
I, I believe those who have already made application, that they're, they're free to do what, whatever it is they have applied to do.
They're able, they'll, the, you know, we'll cut it for that, and say, well, you, you know, you can tell if it could or couldn't, instead.
We just wanna provide them with the correct information.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table this ordinance. And if I can get a roll call vote, that, sorry, force of habit, I keep looking at Janet and have to redirect over here.
Vice Mayor Grabin.
Yes.
Councilman Cagle.
Yes.
Councilman Manning.
Yes.
Councilman Sue.
Yes.
Mayor Laverne.
Yes, so that, that ordinance is tabled.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Middleton, I see here ordinance number 1004. So if we want to do a mortgage, we want billboards, would that be ordinance number 1005? Would that, is that the next number, is what I'm getting at?
Would that affect the, we have ordinance, or would that be a resol?
Resolution. Resolution, okay, I'm sorry, what's the next resolution? Twenty-five forty-three. I'd like to make a resolution for number twenty-five forty-three to establish. Chief Custer, I wanna ask your opinion here. Ninety-day moratorium, do you think that would be a suitable timeframe? I don't, I wanna, I would, I would like to put a end date on it, personally.
We can do ninety days, and if, if, if the information is not back from all the sources, we can always extend that if we have to. I don't want this to be a long-term, um, moratorium, just, we just need to be able to regulate it before we continue to issue these permits, just.
Twenty-five forty-three is to place a ninety-day moratorium on any LED billboard permits and any poster board to LED conversion permits. Would that language suffice?
I thought we were doing all billboards, which we were defining as converting existing regular billboards to LEDs.
That's what I was gonna do.
No, I thought she said.
I said, I said new LEDs and any poster board to LED conversions, so.
But are we doing new billboards here, are we doing all billboards?
I thought we already had one.
Oh, we did, yeah, that's.
Well, I, I'd like to see this go ahead and put it in this, I'm sure.
Yeah, the, the, the other was billboard and off-premise signs greater than twenty-five square feet was a moratorium mandate. That was, because the, that requires a use on review currently, until the moratorium, to get a new one. Some of the question was, is what if you already have this billboard and you wanted to make the conversion, can you or can't? And this one came up at a meeting several weeks ago, and I'll have to review the minutes to see how that was answered. And this is not just billboards, this is LED signs, period. Whether it be a billboard or a sign out front of your business, this is just a temporary moratorium on all LEDs until they can move forward.
Yes, I did not make any differentiation. All right, so, Ms. Middleton, so moratorium of LED. Resolution twenty-five forty-three is to place a ninety-day moratorium effective immediately on any new, on any construction of LED signs and/or billboards, and any conversion of signs and/or billboards from poster, paper, poster board to LED and/or electronic. Everybody?
Mr. Cady?
I, what is it? Poster paper, we'll talk about that.
Well, that's what they, that's what Mr. Hunter referred to me as, in the conversation with.
We're gonna say that the business owners, that they cannot put a LED light inside their business. Is that what you decided?
If, an open sign, open sign, um, exit sign, that's not a provision that we're working on right now. We're talking about, you can call it permit. Do what?
Inside signs?
Yeah, but.
These are.
We can replace the exit signs with LEDs, and that's, that's legit. We're talking about signs out in front of their business, or signs on their building, or signs on billboards, large-scale LED signs. Something that you do with a window for open or closed, maybe an LED, but that's, that's, that's not even enforceable in our ordinance, our current ones.
We've got, we've got one LED sign that did.
That's a scroll, that's a scroll sign?
Scroll sign. I mean, is the side of the window?
Then you would have to be specific of zero LEDs, period, for ninety days. Doesn't matter what kind of, if it is a part of a sign, it would have, that's how it would have to, to make it correct. Am I right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I did not make a clarification on, in the ordinance.
Right.
So I would go under the assumption that that includes all of them. Now, this is only for new installation. You know, the ones that are there, they're there for conversion, so, you know.
That's also, that's also, don't include the ones, as Coker said, don't include the ones inside the building.
I'll say it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are we comfortable with the language? All good.
Can I ask you a question before?
Yes.
Place to put the sign up, they did get a permit.
It will have to be removed. I'll make, I'll, before we go through that process, I'll get Mr. Rorke to go with his office and just double check. But they didn't make application for a permit at all, and went ahead with the installation, which would be a violation. But I'll work the language out with his office to make sure that the notice of violation is correct.
We have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Grabin.
Yes.
Councilman Cagle.
Well, like I said, Mike, we just definitely don't put ourselves backwards. I'll go ahead and say yes on the moratorium for ninety days, and help Mayor Grabin.
Councilmember Manning.
I'll sustain.
Councilmember Sue.
Yes.
Mayor Laverne.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Look, I mean, I'm not trying to hurt anyone, and I've, I've explained this to all the billboard companies, and they understand. From the tunnels to the end of Ringo Road is eight miles, correct? About three months ago, I went down through there, I counted their bill, the billboards. There is, I don't remember the exact number, there's between sixty and seventy billboards within eight miles. If you don't believe it, go out there and count them yourself. And that's, I think we've got enough, we have enough. So I think it gets to a point that, you know, you can oversaturate an area with billboards and, uh, quite honestly, it gets to looking a little gaudy. So, we're trying to turn these streets around.
Well, it is, you know, as far as the, the technology, the LED signs and all the rest, you know, I, I think we can't just allow the technology to dictate to us what our city looks like. It's kind of how we, frankly, we developed to begin with. There's no rhyme or reason. We allow circumstances to determine what our city looks like. That's why you've got little houses here and there on Ringo Road, there's a strip center here, and there's a church here, and there's this here. There's no rhyme or reason, it's just podge, podge, whatever. And if we, if we don't get ahead of the curve on issues like this, we're gonna see the same thing happen. It's, it's gonna get away from us, and we're gonna look back and say, boy, we should have done something.
Uh, I, that was, if you're talking about, I'm not gonna say what the story is. There's two that's been built recently in these streets. They've got one in another town. If you look at the word signs, what they have in the I P L, that's what, what it was, and it's called the building codes, is what they expect you to be.
The design standard?
Design standards, and that's something we did look at.
The design standard, not to get off on another subject, is, is somewhat built into the sign package now, that will limit the pole signs and stuff, where you actually have to have, you build it, it, once, providing that it passes. Uh, once that's done, you'll have to, there's certain standards in there, we're gonna have to match the facade of the building and stuff, which would make it a lot more pleasing to the eye.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You might as well keep standing up there.
Well, item, actually, item B, ordinance number 1004, is the, I think. No problem. Uh, this is second final reading, uh, the ordinance 1004.
Those are not for, oh, sorry, go ahead. Hey, the truck goes on, you know?
An ordinance to revise flood plain management regulations to comply with updated FEMA flood plain regulations have to maintain eligibility for participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, here on second final.
Those are not approved. Those are not approved, we have a second, second.
I have a question.
Have a second, yes, sir.
The date it is filed is February third, February of sixteen, so this is, has not been approved yet through the.
Yeah, we have, yeah, the deadline is February third.
All right, hold on.
So.
Hold on. Flood plain, we're talking about work with them, that's taken a while. I've had a battle in the last few weeks, and I would have to. And the bigger problem we have right now, I mean, just fixed, you remember that?
They never have the wrong ones.
And, where we were, every time you call, you don't get to talk to the same person. And you ask the next person to talk to, they're sorry, they tell us, oh, sorry, we can't do that, get to talk to us.
You don't worry, second.
And, yeah, because you see the, line is on the second page. The references, the flood plain maps, it affected February third. We got legally, we got to the documents before February third. We have the dates correct, but it will be effective on February third when the new flood plain is coming.
Okay, we have any other, any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Grabin.
Yes.
Councilman Cagle.
Yes.
Councilman Manning.
Yes.
Councilman Sue.
Yes.
Mayor Laverne.
Yes.
Moving on to new business ordinance number 1005.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Eastbridge, Tennessee, to break up the parking of personal recreational vehicles in commercial parking lots for more than three consecutive days, here on first.
Uh, Chief Custer, can you explain the purpose of this ordinance?
Yeah, basically, we, we've had several complaints, you received the complaints, our office received the complaints, but we had no, no real substantiation in our, in our ordinance that allowed us to enforce the parking of recreational vehicles on commercial lots, and that just doesn't mean any commercial lot. If you're a business that sells, that stores recreational vehicles, does maintenance on recreational vehicles, it doesn't apply. This is just saying, if I personally owned a bakery on Ringo Road, that I couldn't bring my RV there and park it and leave it for three years.
Or you couldn't allow, for example, a third party to.
Exactly.
Stay there for three years.
Exactly.
If I'm not mistaken, and you and I had this conversation earlier as well, I believe there's already uh, an ordinance on the books that prohibits the living in campers and/or RVs. Is this ordinance just an extension of that?
If that, I'm not personally related to that, so if you said that, I'm not sure I can answer it. But this, this is kind of going a step further saying, and this would encompass that, you wouldn't be able to live in an RV on a commercial lot or anything else. And our, our current property maintenance code doesn't allow that.
When you say anything, yes, you can talk about houses also, if you gotta have one outside of a house.
It, a residential property, that's, say, one block off Ringo Road, that's some commercial, that's.
No, I'm talking about, I'm just talking about residential.
No, it doesn't, this does not apply to residential properties. This is, this is commercial properties, it can be commercial and, or some commercial, have a residential home, um, which is gone. This is just basically saying, whether it's Ringo Road, whether it's Springs Lake.
And what's that gonna do to another, a place here on Ringo Road? You know, it's still.
So, that's a selling, that's a commercial, but that's also a business, their business losses as a storage facility. Um, it's been the same way in Canada, they, they're, they're settings. This is just their personal recreational vehicle to be left out, it's good for our lot.
We have one, quote, called, which I, you know, I'm talking about, and we've got a camper that's in the front, I know, leasing. So I've been in the office, going on twelve years, been there ever since. And the man used excuses with mom, which is a lot, so, like, pretty run through it all down. And nobody's ever went and talked to him. I know, this poor youth took the job, I think, and, but that's his excuse he uses, he's with mom. Well, you want on twelve years, he's terrible with mom. Indeed, I ain't seen, never seen the man at all, sitting there.
Well, that situation would be a little different if you were remodeling, and you owned a business that did repairable.
Oh, he don't, he don't, business, but he didn't need to remodel.
That's great, so that's why we're trying to address some of these issues that we've been getting up the last few years.
Um, everyone, as you noticed, the, the mayor had to leave. He had a personal, personal emergency he had to go deal with, so he apologized for having to leave.
But could you check in to that place, roll call back?
Yes, sir.
If I'm not mistaken, that's from home, yeah.
You, you, what's the physical address?
Uh, it's right next to the barbecue place. You all know about that?
More on the side, if you, if you have one, you have a residential, with someone to live in, with that, permission.
Not according to the property maintenance code, that's totally separate from this. The property maintenance code will pick up for the residences. This is just for the commercial.
That's not allowed, residential.
If you don't mind, um, I don't have a problem personally, myself, passing this tonight, if, if that's the will of the council. However, I would like to see some language put in there, that you were talking about a minute ago, that car lots that are actually selling the campers are exempt, um, etc., you know what I mean?
Instead of one of those.
In reference to, to the selling and/or storing, and I was, I think it would, maybe need to be added.
I can work with them. Mr. Walter Melon, pardon.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
What I'm, I'm talking about, so, yeah, it's not this guy, it's himself. He's in there, I think, for, for being mom, and he's blocking up business, and the business is talking to him. He says he loves him, he wants to get higher.
Can I make a motion that we approve this with new language?
Yes, we can, yes. It's only, it's first reading, so we can...
Motion approved.
Second. Councilman, Councilman Cagle? Councilman Manning? Second?
Yes, sir.
You make the motion, I was asking for, I was asking for a second.
I thought you said.
No, I, I, I thought you did.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Braven?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sill?
Yes.
Let, let me follow up on this before we start, before we spend, uh, in the next week. No person or entity shall park any personal recreational vehicle in any commercial parking lot, which is not otherwise zoned by variance or otherwise, so as to prevent such personal recreational vehicles. Is, is it your position that, for example, as Councilman Braven indicated, um, you've got an RV on a, a lot for sale, that, that we need to have some exemption in there as well?
That's, that's the purpose that they would like it to say. When we redid this, it was the, uh, uh, or otherwise so, I mean, so it's, we know they're permitted for sales, services, and storage, that's, they operate every day. This is just taking that out of the, for the, you know, just anybody to park their RV wherever they want to on Ringo Road, that's what that prohibits, and that plainly states that. But I think you're asking for specifics to give annex, like A, B, and C. You can have it for sales, you can have it for service, you can have it for storage.
Right, that's, that's, that's the only thing I'm asking. Just for, just for clarification purposes.
Just since you can run that ring around, parking, parking lot, put it for sales, uh, that business has to be...
For sales, for storage, for service.
Well, we're not creating more quality, probably, when I do that, because, being the way I read it now, it's different than what I think.
But, yeah, we can make an exception.
That, that is what I...
Uh, we want to make that amendment.
You like the tabloid?
No, it's already been voted on, first time.
Yes.
We'll catch you.
Well, we got three lots on these Ringo Road.
I'm sorry?
Oh, we got three lots on Ringo Road, the rest was tweeds and ten world.
Uh, then Jeff Coe stores them?
Yeah, but, but they're not there for sale, they're there for...
They're there for storage, that was one of the exemptions, exemptions.
That's the, or otherwise so, so as to prevent...
Yeah. So there's four? Grants? All right. Skip, uh, we're gonna skip resolution number 2539 on the grant consent agenda, uh, for the reason being that resolution number 2549 does not need to be included in the grant consent agenda. It needs to be voted on and adopted, uh, on its own. And I believe, uh, Deputy Chief Allen is gonna come up and address, address this on this.
2539?
2541.
Oh.
We're skipping 2539.
We'll be pleased with the chart. A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the City of East Ridge Police Department to state that the governor's highway safety office seat belts are for everyone safe in the city.
If you don't mind, Chief, just give us a rundown version of it.
It's simply a, uh, enhanced campaign to encourage the citizens of East Ridge to wear seat belts, which is the law. And it, it will be done through enforcement, through education. Uh, we're gonna do a survey on where our, where our members are as far as what our seatbelt usage is. It involves no money, it, it's, there's no grant involved in it, there's no overtime involved in it. It's just an enhanced enforcement and education.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second, roll call, please, any further discussion? I'm sorry?
Are we doing these resolutions one at a time?
We're doing that one, we pulled that one only out because it was not technically a grant. The re, the other three, we're gonna throw down as a consent agenda. Yeah. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Braven?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sill?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, uh, the grant consent agenda consists of resolution number 2539, 2540, and 2542. Uh, Mr. City Attorney? Do you have to read all those captions, or is what we've done good enough?
Let me do that, historically, that's the way it's always been done, let me...
Quite honestly, I don't understand why you have to read them all.
I have a question.
Why you have to read every resolution in an ordinance, I mean, it's right here in front of you.
I have a question about a minute ago.
Okay.
All right. City manager, ready to review my question?
It's up to the city attorney, he feels like he...
Let me go ahead, yeah, I'll start with 2539. Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the City of East Ridge to apply for an accept for Walmart Foundation and Union Plan for Fire Department.
Any questions on that, with Councilman Cagle?
Well, it's actually the 49, 2539 and 2540, opened up to the kind of, because, uh, we said we have already received both of them. And, uh, back there, the revenue, the grant, uh, the police has heard there's been a revenue, but the fire department has, so that's the fire department receiving, turning it in the city.
Just when we have...
Uh, so it's not showing up in the grant, when the, like, the fire department says...
All, all of those, uh, allocated to our needy child.
Yes, sir, it was allocated.
So when, can I explain? Uh, so when it was received, it would be received into the needy child fund. It has a revenue line item, and that's where we recredit it to, because it was going into that checking account.
Okay, now, this goes, it didn't go into the grant fund.
Right, it did not, it went directly into that checking account.
It went into the grant fund, then went to the grant fund, to needy child fund.
Typically, Councilman Cagle, in the past, what we've done, and the reason, this is a housekeeping hour, we have applied for many, many grants over the years from Walmart. And the reason, in the past, we have done this, Councilman, we brought it before council before, years ago, council said, "Hey, this is a guaranteed thing, there's your, there's your small grants, you're taking a turnaround, and you're putting the money back into Walmart because you're buying for needy child fund." So doing such, we, we got into a bad habit, I guess. We got into a habit, applying things, except for the guarantee, the grant, there's no matching money, it's not cost to city any money at all, we're gonna have to get money back. This was the first year that Walmart offered it to the police department. The reason we were brought, uh, this was brought to our attention, it was on a hurry, hurry basis. Uh, school, our school manager said, "Look, we want you to apply these grants, get it going, we'll help you walk through it, it's guaranteed, we want to present you these checks." Got our grant up, as well as us, City Council, and everybody who's present, we received the checks, so...
You know, I already have a question. It's just, just... Saying, should we, the grant fund, they took out the grant fund signatures to your needy child fund, like the police, to show your expenditure in that grant fund? So, that's what I'm saying, just for bookkeeping.
We do, yeah.
We can do that, I mean, I thought if I, if I'm civil, we won't have to do that. I mean, that's just, that's just what I'm saying, definitely. You have the package of two grants here, fifteen hundred dollars a piece, you're calling it grants, that's the key word, it's not showing up in the grant card.
Was the mention in the law, right?
Yeah.
The law it did?
I mean, I, I don't, but I'm looking at 216, 2016, not 215, I'm gonna see. This is my question. But I'm just asking, should it be through the grant fund, first, before it went to needy child fund? Since it is labeled as grants.
I guess since it is labeled as grants, it should, that one, have a record for it. We have, how much we took in, and then we allocated to, for, for the grant.
And that's my question, guys.
All right, any further discussion on resolution number 2539? That's the only resolution that, uh, that we are going to be voting on at this time?
That's important, thank you.
Well, I mean, I would like to, you got any further discussion on...
No, 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 but, but, roll call, that, that was not a discussion, I have nothing on the menu there.
Okay.
One thing I got on, are we voting to put any grant, and take a part of grant, and put the needy child fund, or what we vote?
I, I think that that's already been handled, if, from, from here further, it will be handled going into the grant fund, then going into the needy child fund. Uh, I think since it's already been deposited into the needy child fund, there's no reason to bring it back out, put it in the grant fund, then put it right back into the needy child fund. But, but I think Chief Williams, I think he's made it clear that from here on out, that's the way it will be done. It'll go grant fund first, then it'll be dispersed into either the police or the fire department.
We can actually do an internal, internal entry, and then reflect it, without moving the money, we will do a, a internal entry to reflect where it was received again and again.
Thank you.
That is within the asking rules.
Thank you. All right, uh, let's move on then to, uh, resolution 2540. Mr. City Attorney, can you read that, okay? If, if you feel that you, that you have to read every one of them, yeah?
All of those rules provide for non-proportional, uh, if you get punched, those get blocked. Council, please.
Remember where we are.
Let me read. A resolution of the City Council.
No, 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 I, I tell you what, folks, does it, does anyone have any issues with resolution 2540 or 2542? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve resolution number 2539, 2540, and 2542?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Vice Mayor Braven?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning? Councilman Sill?
Yes.
Next out, to discuss, take action on adding a position in administration. Don't wanna do additive, don't know if it was a council member, or if it was, uh, administration? Would you care to clarify, Chief Williams?
I was talking about his last meeting, I don't think he learned, possibly, or I couldn't remember. But this will help. Coats, let's, because we're free, we've got, moved somebody out of Coats into position, we've got another person. Administration, through the opposition there, so we fear that, put a position in administration, and there's, uh, not somebody in Coats.
Okay, let me see if I understand what you said. You moved someone from Coats into administration, but they're really away from the position in administration, so was that position...
Well, there was, there was, but they don't do it. I'll address this, it's gonna be a best note I can. Prior to, uh, my taking this position, the prior city manager moved some folks out of City Hall. Okay, moved to different departments, so the positions will never fill in City Hall, for the administration part of it. So that correct calls a, a shortage in manpower here at City Hall. So typically, people at City Hall have been doing multiple jobs, and things have been adding up, and it's, they're overloaded, especially. So, uh, one employee was moved over to, uh, administration at this time, to kind of help with those duties of taking out of Coats. So the position of Coats is still there, technically, because this person's being paid out of Coats. Okay, you follow me there? So what we need to do is, we need to really add another position in administration to assist with the duties here in City Hall.
Uh, what would that be?
I mean, right, right now, this is the thing, we, we don't have a city manager, we're paying a hundred, some thousand dollars to right now. Okay, uh, we don't have a city treasurer that we're paying probably eighty-nine, ninety thousand dollars for benefits. So there's two positions here at City Hall, at least one definite, that the city treasurer, uh, is no longer, that was, was doing some, a lot of the day-to-day stuff, or, or being involved in that. So the shorthand in this, City Hall, is, 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 uh, pretty great right now.
But those two positions are going to be filled, uh, hopefully, in the very near future. Number one, the city manager's going to be filled, and number two, I'm assuming that the city treasurer position is going to be filled. What are we gonna do when we fill those new positions? Is that person that, 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 uh, you think we need to create a position for administration, is that person going to go back to Coats? Uh, is that person still going to be needed?
That person came from the reception station, that one you were doing...
That receptionist left, what is it?
There was a receptionist up front that was moved to the back, in administration, she was already signed in administration. Okay, she went to the back to assist the duties that are back there that we need more help out of. Okay, there was a person in Coats that was moved over to administration to fill her position up front temporarily. There were some other circumstances administrative, issues that had come up as well, that person was put over there. I'm talking to the city attorney about that, I'll, I'll, I'll get to that.
What I'm trying to do is, is for you, uh, will they hire somebody else in Coats? I don't know, they, they, did you see?
What's the job out?
Well, the, and the pay, what's the pay, um, in this...
I mean, you argue, I mean, you argue, I'll get there, thank you. Basically, it's a part of position, and I think we discussed fourteen, it's probably about fourteen dollar amount.
But you, the person that was moved from Coats over to administration, could, could, like, did?
Could, could, I...
You want to cut it, yeah?
Effective, effective signing, the reason being...
Oh, she can't do the cut, I mean...
Not been a cut by yet, because there is still action, even, and I've been in conversation with the city attorney about such.
She's gonna cut the pay, yeah?
She's not, her cake, her pay is not been adjusted yet. I'm sorry, the employees pay, it's not been adjusted yet.
No, we're talking, city manager, we're talking, for somebody to go in Coats, we talk to somebody to back.
Second?
Well, what, what we're... You create a position in administration, that person is now being paid by the administration. She stays in that position, or that person stays in that position, then you're freeing up the position of Coats.
How much was the, the previous person that was in the, the administrative position, what, what she did?
The person that was up front?
Yes.
She would, no, did...
Uh, was that her? Okay, what, what is her pay?
What her pay is, um...
I don't have any...
I think, I think it was twelve something an hour, or whatever, she told me.
And what is the person that is, what is the replacement person's current pay?
It's quite high. The reason it's quite high is there's several things that take into consideration. One, she's not getting hired. Two, you have to take in the amount of years that she's been here, and her base has been adjusted over the years. So you can't come in and take the person that's making the same, say, for instance, twenty, twenty-something dollars an hour, and take them back out to starting pay of that position. That's not completely fair to the person, no matter what her disciplinary action is, or, or the other issue that may have come up. I think that her, her time, her certification, her dedication to the city, prior to these other administrative issues, is also, we have to take into consideration.
Now, there's people that, uh, out in the private sector world that take pay cuts all the time. I mean, based upon, you know, whatever actions, based upon, it can be a downturn in the economy, there's people that take a downturn. And the private, and the rural, or business... world, I don't...
That's what's anticipated here is about...
Well, he's saying until the action is determined, there's, so, so the future action, so, you know, the question that's in my mind is, when is that future action?
Discussion today on city attorney about such, it's something that has been ongoing, of course, there have been other things that we've had to deal with, so...
I just, I'm sorry, I just have a really hard time appointing another position in administration where there is such a wide discrepancy in the pay.
Welcome to the City of East Ridge, because this, this is an issue that's been going for many years, is we don't have a standard pay in the City of East Ridge, okay? This is a problem that's been going on for many years here. You come in at the entry level, you make so-and-so, and it moves on, you tire another guy, he's been here one year, and he's making the same amount of money you're making, when he's, you've been here thirty years. So, the pay in general, I've already addressed with the partners, we want to put something in place, and we're working on it now, but we, we can't do it prior to a budget, as far as, we worked on prior to a budget, at budget time, we want to present that to council, okay? We are working on that at this time. It's something that, the, Mr. Dogg, when he was here, he put something together, we are working hard off of it, it's called a SAM type of pay scale, but we have to look at every, every individual. I don't think it's fair that I worked here for, you know, twenty-eight years, and a guy hired in the bar, he was here six months, and now he's making the same that I'm making. I mean, you agree with me, your fault. And I think, I think your employees gotta have some copies.
But also, every employee should not be quote-unquote entitled simply because they've been here for a certain amount of time. If they've done something to where there is a need in a reduction of pay or something like that, there should, we should have, the city should have the ability...
Because it does have the ability to take away pay from an employee that's been disciplined, put in another position, the city's up to city manager to deduct that pay. It doesn't say, will that pay, how much is to, to be deducted. That is left up to discretion of the city manager. I don't agree with that. I think that that is very wide open, and I think that it ought to say you go down one or two levels, but we don't have those one or two levels, that's the problem.
Well, gentlemen, it's, it will, it will be the will of the council, but personally, I, I don't feel comfortable in, in adding a position if, number one, we don't have any kind of job description or, and responsibilities laid out, any kind of qualifications laid out, and certainly any kind of salary.
Can I change this, we need another person to have this approved, another position.
I make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to table this action till the problem is resolved, and then come back at the next council meeting. If that problem is resolved with a job description, salary range for this position that they are wanting to have.
I'd like to, uh, if I can slightly...
Well, right now, we're discussing this, because Coats is not only intended...
I'll say it in your motion, Counselor Cagle. Any further discussion at the table? Robo, please.
Vice Mayor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Cagle.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Sill.
No.
Let me suggest, for the purpose of the next meeting, we can be careful, globally needs to talk about, and the general, to relate to action with the administration and the, the, the precision problem.
The, 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 the,